Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, April 3, 2023. We call this meeting to order at 6:30. Let the record reflect that all school board members are present and all city councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Archer, who is excused. So with that, I invite open the joint meeting with the school board. Anyone have anything open they'd like to say? If not, we'll jump right into Item A, which is the superintendent budget update, which is good news. We always like to get money, so it's nice to hear that there's some additional revenue coming this way. So any upfront questions, comments, any additional agenda items? Okay, great. Superintendent Ray?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. We were here a couple of weeks ago when we gave our initial budget presentation. And like every budget cycle, things always change between the first part and then the next update. And so hopefully, we're here tonight to give you an update. Just trying to put where our calendar is, is that on Wednesday night, we will hopefully take an approval of our budget. But I'm here tonight because of the order and the timing of things to give you an update of where we stand kind of right now in the recommendations that I'll be making for next week. So I emailed you all a week or so ago when we were informed on March 29 that the Department of Education was releasing another printout on subsidy. Throughout the process of subsidy, we kind of, as superintendents, had kind of said, hey, what's going on here? We looked at the governor's numbers that were put out. And when they did some digging, they found a mistake in the algorithm that generates the reports for all school departments across the state of Maine, and it inadvertently inflated the required mill rate to 7.29 when it should have been 6.97. So that makes quite a shift of your, basically what it does, it takes your local required allocation on page four of the ED-279, decreases that amount, and dollar for dollar adds that to your subsidy when they take your town valuation times 6.97 instead of 7.29. And the net result is $887,000 coming to the direction of Saco to help with a budget decrease from taxpayers. So that's always a good sign. What I'd like to do is just, as we had talked about last time, looking at where possible reductions would come from so that we could get to a point where there was kind of a more of a firm number put to you. The second piece I'll do is that we talked about these reductions at our finance meeting the other night on page two, and these will be presented to the school committee again on Wednesday night. And in any budget, there was a couple of items that as we went through, we found a couple of mistakes or things that needed to be adjusted. And on the top part of this page was when the fuel bid prices came back in for diesel, gasoline, we needed to add $35,000 to our transportation budget. Cyber casualty insurance was a $15,000 increase, and that's a cost that split between the city and the school department. Transportation, we had received six approved buses from the Department of Education for lease purchase, and only five of those made it to the initial budget, so we needed to add another year of that. Then we looked at budget reductions. We were able to take a, because we are getting more Title I-A funding, we were able to take a position out of the local budget and just shift that to federal funding. Looking at our capital improvements, we were able to decrease our capital improvements by $50,000. That still leaves us half a million dollars in the budget for capital improvements. So you finish the roof, continue to work at SMS, and so on. On the same day that we received our information about additional subsidy, we also learned that the maximum health insurance would be increased, would be 6%. And so we had budgeted 10%, and we were able to decrease the budget by $110,000. Having good news come on our workers' comp rates, we were able to reduce by $43,000. On another backup sheet, we are proposing that there is an unfilled classroom position at SMS. And one of the pieces that we are looking at based off class size and also the program that we offer is we currently only have one art teacher at our middle school for 600 students. And we felt that changing from a classroom position that was unfilled to adding an art position would be a recommendation that we'd like to make to offer more art programming for our students. And then we were also able to adjust district-wide legal expense by $5,000. So with those changes, we were able to reduce our budget or recommend a reduction of $246,000. So as we started to tier this out, we had an increased budget of turning the page of basically without a lot of increases of $2 million, and we're able to take that to $1.8 million. And we'll get to more of how that impacts taxpayers in a couple of extra, in a couple more pages. What I did include for your reference, just so that you could look at, because there was one shift in a position, and it will actually look like two, because in our budget this year, we had a one-year teacher that we added in August with anticipation of our new neighbors coming from the hotel. And we may need to add that position again, but we know that our population is going to probably cycle over over the summertime. And so exactly where that additional teacher would go is not something we're prepared to commit to at this time. We do have federal funding that would be able to cover that position from some of our remaining ester funds. So that's something that even if we had to make that add, would not locally hit this budget. But as you look at your K through eight ratios, what we wanted to do is just kind of show you where our class sizes are. Ideally, on average, we'd be about 1 to 18 students, and that will be the plan as we construct the new schools, that it would be 1 to 18. Some of those numbers are up a little bit, especially at Burns. And there's really no way at Burns to reduce those because we don't have open classrooms at Burns School. So a little on the higher side than we'd like there, but as part of the building construction project committing to 1.18, 1 to, 18 to 1 on the student ratio for the new building will help us with our square footage allocation from the state. At the high school level, looking at what we project, we are again staying with 890 students. That leaves us an additional 25-student buffer in the budget. Not knowing, right now, there are currently 17 students from the hotel at TA. That number has started at 11, went up to as high as 23, has gone back down again. And again, some of that is going to be just on the move-in and move-out scenario of that piece of what happens throughout the year is it's a little bit unpredictable. So we have a buffer of 25 students, and you can see as eighth graders what our anticipation is and why we anticipate 216 students from the 197 at SMS, 18 at TAMS, one at St. James, to come up with the 216. So that is what our thoughts are moving forward. Certainly, as homes sell, you know, you certainly can have students move in, but hopefully, the 25 will be a significant enough buffer for us over the course of the year. So one of the things that we had talked about is we know that initially, looking at expenditures and, you know, a few weeks ago, we were thinking we had lost $260,000 in state subsidy from the year, from the year before, and then that kind of flipped on us. When you look at our reductions that we'll be recommending on Wednesday night, and you look at the difference from expenditure to expenditure, you're looking at $1.8 million or a 3.84% increase expenditure-wise. As you funnel to the bottom of the page and you place the additional subsidy into the formula, I have taken a reduction in Medicaid reimbursement by $100,000 because as we struggle to fill all of our ed tech positions that turn over, hourly positions turn over, if you don't have a person there to bill, then you can't expect that you're going to have revenue there. I've reduced that by $100,000 to play it safe. And the net result of this is that we hope to put forward a budget to you that has an increase of $1,121,876 or a 3.85% increase. So overall, I think this turns out to be a much better picture than we were looking at just two weeks ago, and something that hopefully, we can move forward in a fashion that won't lead you to a lot of late nights on the school department's side in late May. That's what we're hoping for. So I can take any questions about the school budget at this time and questions you might have.
Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Superintendent. Appreciate the update. Fantastic news about the subsidy. 3.85 is, again, really, really great work, especially given where inflation is. I do have a question about the class sizes in your memo. And you have the three tables. You have a current enrollment, 2022, 23, a projected enrollment for 23, 24, and then a projected enrollment with current teacher numbers for 23, 24. And it's those two ones for 23, 24 I'm confused by. Which one do you anticipate being actually the case for next year? And can you explain those differences to me?
Yep. So for the, for the projected budget, the top right-hand corner is what we'll be recommending for general fund expenditures. With the bottom right-hand side was to show you what class sizes would be if we did not make a reduction in teachers. And I think we were really looking at that sixth grade piece where currently, they have nine teachers for the same number of students. You tend to lose a couple, some students as we transition to middle school because some families make a choice to go to TAMS. And that number would have been as, as low as our kindergarten classroom. So by removing one of the classroom teachers there, that helps to bring class sizes more in line at the middle school. But it also gives us the opportunity to really add the art teacher that we feel is missing there of, when you think about an art experience at a middle school level, one teacher for 600 students does not provide a lot of art instruction for kids through a rotating basis. And then the other teacher, like I said, Mike, we added that in August using some of our hour funds. This year, we will probably wind up doing something similar, and I would use those federal funds again for an additional teacher. But not really knowing where that would go at this point in time, that is why that's not in the general budget. And also, as we put together the general budget, we weren't 100% sure whether there'd be a continuation or not. I think with the passing of the governor's budget, we're pretty sure that this will continue on for another couple of years.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Superintendent Ray, I just want to clear my own mind and obviously that of the public. The projected enrollments, I'm assuming, reflect an expectation of consistent historical growth patterns in housing stock. Is that correct?
It is. It is. At this point in time, it's just moving our numbers forward, checking with our consultant that we had for the new school project of what they thought numbers would be. I would say that currently, I can't say that it's up at young school for kindergarten, but the pattern of having firm registrations at this point in the time is a little bit higher than we've experienced. Now, either people are really excited about coming to young school and are really, you know, paying attention to the enrollment stuff, or that's a trend of, you know, maybe there's going to be a bubble there. At the same time, those enrollments at Fairfield for pre, for kindergarten seem a little bit lower than in the past. So I do think that we are going to experience some change in housing moving forward. And certainly, any growth that the city has planned out for whatever is approved in the pipeline could impact those numbers.
And I guess that's my point. If that is in fact the case, yet to be determined, but if that is in fact the case, then we could potentially have some student-to-teacher ratio challenges, staffing issues, spatial restraints, and those kinds of things. So I understand what you're saying, and I, I think you did exactly what you needed to do to get the current budget processed, but I just wanted to plant that seed that moving forward, this dynamic, given the appetite for, for growth in the city, could, could be a challenging factor moving forward. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, no further questions. Thank you very much for the budget presentation. Is there anything else the city council or school board would like to say before we break with the joint meeting with the school board? Okay. Thank you very much for joining us. Feel free to stick around if you'd like and hear about all the budget presentations from all the different departments in the city. We already did recognition, so at this time, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. At this time, we were going to recognize the Thornton Academy hockey team on their great accomplishments. However, that has been pushed back to next week. That brings us to Item Six, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondence at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence, moving on to Item Seven, Public Comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, moving on to Item Eight of the agenda, and that is Approval of the Minutes for March 27, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the minutes for March 27, 2023? Roll call vote on the minutes. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. That brings us to Items, Item Nine, Consent Items, and that is Item A, Confirm Mayor's Appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission for Alex McPhail. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Obstain.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0-1. That brings us to Item 10, Action Items for this evening. And the first up is Item A, A Public Hearing Renewal Applications for Special Entertainment Permit Fraternal Order of Eagles Doing Businesses, Saco Eagles, 3792. Fraternal Order of Eagles Doing Businesses, Saco Eagles, 3792. Well, that's assigned to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fraternal Order of Eagles Doing Businesses as the Saco Eagles, number 3792, has applied for renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and the clerk has properly advertised the public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment 93-2. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion on open the public hearing? Roll call to open. Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to open the public hearing at 6:50 p.m. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the city council in this public hearing on the renewal application for a special entertainment permit for the Fraternal Order of the Eagles Doing Businesses, Saco Eagles, number 3792, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Johnston.
I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by the Fraternal Order of Eagles Doing Businesses as Saco Eagles, 3792, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? See, no discussion. Roll call vote. Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to close public hearing and approve. And that brings us to action items, item 10B, and that is the fiscal year 2024 budget presentations. And I believe we'll be taking them in order, starting with the Water Resource Recovery Department.
My computer died over there, so Blinnus is going to hook me up. We should be long enough to... All right. Looks like we're set to go. Well, thanks for having me here tonight, folks. I'm assuming most of you read through this, so I'll go through this fairly quickly. I think you all know that we are our own enterprise fund and we're not involved in the tax base whatsoever. But really, what we look to do is our triple bottom line, protect the health and well-being of all who live, work, and play within the city, and also protection of the greatest resource in the city, the Saco River, and help support economic development. Those are the three big things that we look to do. So as a year in review, we had just under 5,000 residential customers, 402 commercial accounts. The average residential sewer bill this year was $93 per quarter. And we actually gave back $286,000 in rebates. That's, that's the water meter reeds that people call in. Just under 40 inches of rain. We treated 760 million gallons of water and we produced just under 2,200 ton of biosolids at about 26% solids. So some of the highlights of the past year was we signed a, a contract with MWH for upgrade of the treatment plant. We're into the final leg of design before we start getting some solid prices. We did pick up another 3.4 million from Pingree and King for grant. And we got another one for 1.57 from, from King. We promoted Riley Cobb to compliance manager. He filled a spot that was vacated by Emily Cole Prescott. And we backfilled his position with Matt Zutter, which is also an in-house hire. And we onboarded a new operator, Joshua Lavoie, who happens to live in Saco. So it all worked out pretty well. So here's our budget going up. You can see a lot of those. All addressed where the big increases were on this next page. But currently, our sewer user rate is 625, and we're going to be going up to 766. That's going to be just over a 22% increase. The biggest one of that is the, is the predetermined raise for the, for the bond, which is at 15%, being another 15% next year. But biosolids was a killer for us this year. Went up another 167 because of the PFAS that I think all of you have been reading about in the paper. So we weren't immune to that. And chlorine or hypochlor, hypochlorous has gone, went up a dollar a gallon. Before COVID, it was 80 cents. Now we're paying $2.70 a gallon for disinfection. And we need to buy sodium bisulfide that dilutes the chlorine before it goes out to the river. So those are really the drivers, was the biosol disposal, the chemical cost, and the electricity cost. Because, again, we're the biggest electricity user in the city, so those, they all go together. So just to give you, we put this little chart together to see just where we are compared to other communities. So actually, we're still sitting fairly favorable even with, with the bond. And I think we're going to end up pretty good and end up with a brand-new treatment plant when we're done here. And we're going to be pretty comparable to all the other communities. The only one that's really lighter than us is Scarborough, and that's because they have a flat rate. No matter where you live in Scarborough, you pay the same sewer bill, whether there's one person in there or three. And they have a newer system. But they've been in the news a lot lately, and their biosolids is going up. So I think they're going to have quite an increase. I don't know exactly what it's going to be. But you can see on the side, York, Sanford, Gardner-Falmouth, they're all going up this year, mostly to do with biosolids. So some of the goals this year, we hope to get started on the Resource Recovery Project. We've cleared some trees behind the building after we got our Saco River corridor permit. And we're going to knock down the old Public Works garage probably in June, start breaking ground. Ronan will come in there and prep the site. And we'll continue maintenance of our pump stations. We still have 30 pump stations out there that we have to maintain every year. We spent a fair amount of capital on those. But that's basically it in a nutshell. If anybody's got any questions, certainly happy to answer them.
Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Howard, I just, I want you to explain to the public what, what I already know, and that is your foresight relative to the biosolids and our ability to partially avoid some of the costs relative to the Casella situation, so...
Yeah, well, fortunately, we did not go with Casella in this contract. We kind of saw that 1639 coming for disposal of the bulky waste, and we went with the company in New Hampshire. But right now, we're working with a new technology with this company out of Duke University. They're a spin-off of the university called Supercritical Water Oxidation, where they may be able to take our biosolids and just destroy all the matter, all you'd have left out of a whole trailer full of biosolids, might be a yard of inorganic material. So actually, we just put in a grant today with them. They're taking the lead on it, this company called 374 Water, for $2.5 million to the DOE. And if that goes through, then they will help treat our biosolids for two years without any cost to us, except for a couple man-hours a day. And that will showcase that technology for New England. Everybody's really interested in it. So that might be a win-win for us, where we could reduce our prices over the next couple of years. And if it works out, then maybe we can purchase that for, you know, 10 cents on the dollar or something. So that's one thing we're looking at. We're also concerned with the chemical cost, so we may be looking with another company to do digestion and produce our own power and buy it at set prices. There's a lot of things in play right now, but, and this PFAS has really driven it more than anything else. But remember, we're in the beginning stages of it.
Right. And I think it's important for, for the public to realize that we're not, you're just not sitting still.
Oh, no.
You're trying to find ways to, to cut, cut cost and do the best you can with cards that have been dealt to you. So I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that.
Oh, oh, thank you. And, and it's a good time to be building because these things are coming out. We're trying to shift things to make it work. It's not an easy game, but we're trying to stay up with it, that's for sure. Thank you.
Any further questions? Howard, can you explain contracts on page 231 going up 167,066?
Oh, that's, that's the biosolids.
Is that the biosolids?
That's the biosolids, yeah. Not too many years ago, we were about 140,000 for disposal. Now we're at 412. That's the big, that's the 167.
There's no further questions? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Blinnus.
All right, good evening, mayor, council. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it. Let me get into the police department. So a couple of highlights from 2022. Obviously, during COVID, our calls for service dropped, but our calls for service now are starting to go back up. We had about 26,469 calls for service. That's police firing EMS that come into the emergency communication center. Traffic enforcement is up now that people are out and about. One statistic that's not a good statistic for last year is for 2022, we had 193 OUI arrests in the city of Saco. We've never had that high of a number. I can tell you, year-to-date, we're already up over where we were last year. One of the things that we did to try to combat this in addition to enforcement is we worked with the communications department. They partnered up with the state and did a public service announcement. I'm sure you probably saw it on TV and on YouTube. They did a phenomenal job on that. I was hoping that that might have some type of an impact on the numbers. Like I said, so far, we're still up a little bit. Get back into some community things. National Night Out and Sox for Seniors, we're back. Both great events. We're going to do those again this year, as well as some additional things. But any chance we can get out and work with the community is a plus for us. One of the things that we've also been working on is kind of rebranding ourselves. Everything that we had was always, you know, State of Maine in there. So last year, we purchased new badges. If you've seen our badges in the center, it's no longer the State of Maine seal. It's the City of Saco seal. New shoulder patch, City of Saco. Everything we're doing is City of Saco. This year, we completed some training. We had, the Police Executive Research Forum came in a couple of years ago. Did some train the trainer for all of our folks on ICAT, which is Integrating Communications Assessment and Tactics. This is a de-escalation training. They went all over the world to look at what other organizations are doing and came up with, they kind of compiled it all and put that together. So we have trained every single person on our police department in ICAT. And then finally, one of the things that we've been working on, the academy has mandated that every year moving forward, that police departments do some ongoing training with managing arrest restraint control, which is kind of the hands-on thing. I think a great example of community partnership is with Evolution Athletics. Nate Libby and his crew up there have invited law enforcement in two days a week. It's free. And they provide training on control tactics and how to deal with people that, that don't have weapons. That's been a great event. We're getting more law enforcement officers in there, and that's just going to make us, I think, more effective, more efficient when we deal with people on the street, less reliance on, you know, the tools that we have and stuff. And between de-escalation and learning how to do a better job controlling people, I look at this as a win-win. Fiscal year '23 achievements. One of the things that we had really pushed for, a lot of communities are, is having a social worker. Initially, when we did this, we went by way of a contract where we were contracting that position out with, with a third-party vendor. The downside to that piece is that there's some different things as far as they can't drive a city car, getting them into our records database system, some other things. The person that we had was phenomenal, but she took a job with the community much closer to where she lives. So when we took a second look at this, we backed out of the contract and did this as a city position. And we now have Rebecca Lyons as our licensed clinical social worker. And that program is, is busy. She's doing a phenomenal job. The next thing is last year, we wanted to apply for Emily, at least during the current fiscal, so we have applied for that. That's the main law enforcement accreditation program. That application has been put in and been accepted. We're just in the stack to find out when they're going to come down and do the assessment on the department so that we can move forward with this. Projects for 2024, we pretty much did maintenance of effort. However, one area that we looked at is our indoor shooting range. So the indoor shooting range, years ago when it was put in, when the building was new, we used to clean that ourselves. Now with, you know, EPA regulations and stuff, we're not really suited to get down there and clean that thing. And some of the equipment that was 27 years old that was used to clean it no longer functions. So this would have to be something, every three years, we'd have to pay a company to come in and completely tear apart the range and, and clean it. That's $25,000, $30,000 every three years. We didn't think that this was an effective use of taxpayer dollars. So the city administrator approved it in his budget. We're going to take out the indoor range, repurpose that space for training and employee wellness. And that'll give us the ability down in the basement to rearrange a few things and come up with some more space for storage that we think will help us moving into the future. The next thing we're working on is we are going to upgrade our public safety radio system. This is not just the police department. It's the police department and the fire department. The system is probably 27, 28-plus years old. It really hasn't been touched. Industry standard is every 15 years, you should be doing something with this. We were fortunate that we were able to apply for some congressionally designated spending out of Senator Collins' office, and we were rewarded a significant amount of money, along with some money that was already in the capital program. We're going to be able to make that happen. Hopefully, in the next year, some of the hiccup might be getting equipment. We've found that, like everything else, there's some supply chain issues. So we'll see when we can get it. And then I guess the last thing I would say is, I guess for me to the folks that work in the police department, I cannot thank them enough for the work that they do. We have an exceptional group of people that come in every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They do an amazing job and quite frank, quite frankly, make me look pretty good. So to say thank you is kind of an understatement, but we really do have exceptional people. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Clements? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I would agree with you. I think our police force does a tremendously good job for protecting us. But I do have some concerns. And you and I have talked about this many times in the past. And I want, I'm going to tell you what I recall here, and I want you to correct me if I'm wrong. Given the size of city and the demands on the police department, my recollection is that an, a appropriately-sized force would be somewhere between 35 and 40 patrolling or, or officers. Is that correct?
So this is a question I get asked a lot, is how big should your police department be? And really, there's no national standard that tells you this is what it should be, depending on your city. The FBI does put out some numbers that will show you, based on the size of the city, the geographic area, ballpark, what there are officers per thousand permanent residents. But that's information that police departments report to the FBI. So what, what the experts that look at this say is that you really need to look at your individual community, what's the call for service load, what types of calls. You know, I think a great example would be Washington, DC. I think they're authorized for 5.6 police officers per thousand permanent residents, but they have an influx of a half a million people Monday through Friday that really puts a demand on the police department. We don't have that. So we kind of go by what the calls look like. And I'm not sure that we'll have a good guesstimate on that until we get back to where we should be staffing-wise, to really take a solid look at that. That's why I, I haven't asked for any headcount because I can't give you a solid answer on that because we're not even up to, to full staff.
Well, I appreciate you not asking for a headcount. When we could give you a headcount, you probably couldn't find anybody to fill it. And I guess that's the root of my my concern is that, you know, a growing community is going to have to have, it's going to place, you know, pressure on many departments within the community. But my personal concern is that of the Police Department. So I believe we've budgeted for 37 with no increase. And you have consistently, and not your fault, because I really do appreciate and recognize the efforts that you and your staff are making to recruit. But we still run five-ish positions open, almost, seems like almost constantly. And so we can't even staff up, at least in my simple mind, we can't even staff up to the safety levels we need for our existing demands within our community. And my concern here is that if we do encounter some significant uptick in growth, that that's just going to exacerbate the problem. And I also understand, because I'm pretty close to the department, to some extent, I have a family member who was on the force. And, you know, I recognize that the pressure it puts on the rest of you who want to do a tremendous job, as you do, the hours that you have to put in to cover for those missing positions and the strain that it places on the force and the burnout potential that I hope we don't get to. But so I just, I just think it's a concern. And I think as we look at, talking about growing our community, I think we really need to have you engaged in that conversation even more so if that's possible than you currently do. But I do want, I did want to get that out as a concern. I honestly do worry about your department and protecting citizens of Saco. I see some of the issues on the streets, the traffic, the speeding, the stuff that you just don't have enough capacity to take care of. So I appreciate all the work that you and your force does for the city.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Chief Clements? On the budget, any discussion? Thank you very much. Up next, we will, we will hear from Economic Development. Economic Development Director, Dischardens.
Good evening. Tracy Dischardens, Economic Development Director. This is going to be my first time presenting to you guys, so go easy. The economic development in action, what you see is that, mind you, this is just for the one year. We took in about four, $5.2 million in TIF money generated. Out of that 5.2, over 2 million went to capital projects funded through TIFs, which is, which is good. We did 11 ribbon cuttings. We had 100-plus business either reach out to us, doing business visitations, those calling, looking to open up a business here, inquiring. And mind you, some of this work was done prior to me coming onboard, but I probably had about 60 since I've been here, of different contacts with people. We have 64 new businesses. And this would go into even earlier on, as far as in 2022. And we currently now have $170,000 that are available for the Business Facade and Small Grants Program. So this is going to be a big push for us, is to let people know that we want to welcome your business here. We have funding to help you. And I'm sure you guys have kind of gone through this every year, when it comes to doing TIFs, getting an idea of how the tax dollars is generated. 59 cents of each that does not stay local, essentially 59% of the 59% of the lost tax dollars, 46% is a reduction in state aid to education. Glad to see that the school is able to get some, find some more funding for them. 3% of those lost tax dollars is due to the increase in county taxes. 10% of lost dollars is due to the reduction in state revenue sharing. And Saco can shelter their new growth valuation through the TIF districts, because you lose almost 60%, that it takes twice as much revenue from the general fund to fund TIF-eligible projects and operations and salaries. Gives you a little idea how it's broken out, again with the dollar. 2023 achievements, the market analysis, TIF revenues, again, looking at all these capital projects that have been funded through the TIF revenues. We've done new city policies, which is a food truck, sidewalk vendor, and TIF policy. Grants, I've submitted a $500,000 Brownfield grant, which we hope to hear probably within the next month or so. And I just came to counsel about a new housing project, so we hope to be able to submit for that grant, and that will be another $500,000. Also, within the grants, the city has an in-house grant. What do you want to call this? Little working group? And we've been certainly working on grants. And that's been going very well, and I'm pleased to be part of that. Sale of city-owned properties. That Chapter 81 now has changed, so the Economic Development Department will be taking on that responsibility and also been marketing what properties that we have available. Marketing and communications, we certainly have stepped the roll-up on this. I also left you all a little pamphlet of, that we had created, a rack card, that one side is the facade grant program, the other side is for the small business grant. We also have a QR code that people can go in, and it goes right directly to our website. And all the information and applications and that are there. So we continue to up the ante in regards of opening our communications and marketing who we are. The wayfinding signs, that is going well. Jessa and I will be meeting with a consultant, and we hope to have some samples and some examples of what we'll be looking at for wayfinding. So that project's moving right along. For 2024 projects and goals, again, to continue to work in with grant opportunities, continue to maximize the TIF revenues for capital projects, continue to work with business attraction and retention, and now taking on the housing situation and working with our, again, working group on housing. Take the market analysis and the comprehensive plan and work on the implementation, work with the Planning Department on that. Complete the wayfinding project, work with more public art within the area, and also work with the sale of city-owned properties. My goal is to do a complete inventory on what we have for properties and see what opportunities are out there. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Tracy, I just wanted to comment on two very glowing examples of the power of interdepartmental cooperation. So I'm really delighted to hear that we're ramping up our approach to grants. Grants can be seen as free money, so the more you can do with that, the better. And the fact that you're working with the Planning Department to bring that comprehensive plan to action and in the long run, in harmony with our zoning ordinance. I would like to point out, from my perspective anyway, one of the first goals you listed in the budget book has to do with the diversity of the city's tax base. I'm very concerned that we need to be moving as quickly as we can into expanding on the commercial side. We have a very high dependence on tax revenues from residential, and we need to skew that the other way. And we have a lot of residential in the pipeline, so it's going to be even harder to try to shift that burden to the commercial side, relatively speaking. So I know you'll work on that. I know it's high in your set of priorities, and I would encourage you to move in that direction as quickly as you can. And if there's anything the Council can do to help you with that, to please come back and speak with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Discussion? No? Thank you very much. Up next, we will hear from the City Clerk's Office and Clerk Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor Doyle, Councilors, Administrator Kane-Raff. So I'd like to start out by just doing a quick introduction of our current office staff, just for the folks at home who may not be familiar with our office. I'm Michelle Hughes. I'm the City Clerk, Registrar of Voters. Jessica Brackett is our Deputy City Clerk and Deputy Registrar. Linda Bernier is our Assistant City Clerk, and Jane Maynard is our General Assistance Administrator. The photo at the bottom is, was actually taken in the November 22 election, and it shows some of our Election Day volunteers, as well as some of our residents. Currently, we have about 42 election volunteers. And as you know, right now, it's hard to find people to employ and stuff, and it's the same way for the volunteers. So Saco is very fortunate to have such dedicated volunteers. Some of them have been here 30-years or more, so we're very fortunate that way. The next slide shows the various divisions of the Clerk's Office, which are Elections, Licensing, Records, and General Assistance. This is a good sampling of the various functions that we do. It's not a complete listing, but it's a good sampling. For the November 22 election, we had 4,695 absentee ballots. 5,300 voters came in person, and we had, at that time, 13,996 registered voters. So it was a good turnout at 71%. We had quite a few signatures that we certified this year for petitions, a total of 9,376. And we had 6,421 voter registration updates. And the voter registration updates, those included name addresses, name changes, address changes, party changes, people who passed away, or people who moved to another community, and it also included the redistricting. Under the licensing, currently, we have 426 business registrations. We processed 1,183 online dog licenses. We have 36 liquor licenses and 12 one-day catering permits. For our morons, we're at 96 annual morons right now, and we have 38 people currently on the waitlist. Our Victualist licenses are at 115. Under our records, we've processed 27 for requests, done 12 legal ads, 20 sets of council minutes, codified 11 ordinances, issued five poll permits. And under the vital records, we've had 153 births, 124 marriages, 185 deaths, and issued 1,631 certificates. The general assistance figures, this goes through the end of February. So currently, we have assisted 66 families, which included 118 people. The expenditures to date are $46,083.96, and the state has reimbursed us $32,258.78. That's at 70%. For the achievements, one of the things that was instituted this year through the Secretary of State's office was automatic voter registration records that we received from the motor vehicle. This was a huge step forward for the state, because there's always been issues in the past when people go to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles. They think that they may be registering to vote when they're updating their address, and they're really not. They're just doing an address change, which gets sent to a community to be able to take them off the list, but it doesn't get them registered anywhere. So this new system, when somebody goes in, they don't have to fill out paper cards anymore. They're, they just have to opt-in to having the information sent to the municipality. And in the past, when we had the cardboard, paper cards, it used to take three to four weeks for us to actually get this data back, because it would leave the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, go to the Secretary of State's office. They'd sort through the stuff and then send it to us. Now we get the records on a daily basis, so this is a huge improvement. The license management software application, this is something, an application that we started this year. This is a really great system. What it allows us to do is we can communicate with departments all at once, and they can now check off, once they've done their inspection, or look to see if taxes were current, all at one time versus in the past, we used to have to take the licenses, give them to one department. They go through them, we get them back, give them to the next department, and it was a really long, drawn-out process. So this here is working really good. It also gives us the option to do online licensing, as well as collect the fees online. And I would note that Emily Cole Prescott, our city planner, she's been instrumental in helping all the departments get set up in the iWork system, so that we can all work together. So this is really a great system. Currently, I'm a member of the main town, the City Clerks Association Legislative Policy Committee. And our General Assistance Administrator, Jane Maynard, is a member of the Maine Welfare Directors Association Legislative Policy Committee. Projects and goals for the next fiscal year. I'm going to have an evaluation of all of our vital record books done by a professional preservation company, just to identify any books that need preservation or restoration. It's been a while since they've come in, so it's time to have that looked at. We're going to do more promotion of the license management system to increase online usage and head towards paperless licensing for next year. And the next thing that we're looking to do is to improve the poll-in-place process flow for voter registration and voting for future elections. This past November, we had a little bit of snafu with the lines and stuff. The voter registration line getting mixed in with the voters going to, just trying to get in to vote. So we've already started putting some plans in place to make that flow better for the future elections, keeping the lines separate, and moving the tables back. future elections, keeping the lines separate, and moving the tables back, so that there's more space for the voters to get in and actually stand in their lines. The other thing that I'd like to do is to coordinate tri-community general assistance meetings to discuss the various issues, and increase communication between the communities. And I'll be working with our GA administrator to do that. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk Hughes? Any discussion? And with that, thank you very much. Up next, we'll hear from Parks and Recreation Director Sommer.
It gives me a great pleasure to be back up here to present the 2024 budget presentation for the Parks and Recreation Department. We're excited of what we achieve every year, and hopefully you will see the excitement of what we have done. In Parks and Recreation, in the last fiscal year, fiscal year 2023, we have seen roughly 13,000 registrations, and that's not even during our peak season, which is happening tomorrow. That's from July 1 through March 10. You guys, today, we announced that we have the Lucky 13, which is 13 years of being Tree City USA. We currently have 301 seniority members in our 2023 lifetime and annual members, who enjoy the active senior programs that we offer daily. We staff roughly 105 employees in our recreation, parks, and lifeguarding divisions. And if there's anybody listening, we are still looking for lifeguards. In our programs that we offer, about 80 to 100 programs, and our major programs of youth sports, which is basketball, soccer, T-ball, flag football, cheering, we see anywhere between 200 to 450 participants in those large programs. And as of today, there are 537 registrations for senior and adult exercise and fitness programs that we offer on a daily basis, through pickleball, yoga, tai chi, and many Fiscal year 2023 achievement, as we came out of the COVID years of being exhausted, I looked at my foreman and the staff, and I said, you know what? We worked hard the last couple of years. Let's sit back, we're a little understaffed, and we're just going to go forward. And then all of a sudden, things kicked in. The most thing that we're proud of mostly is the rehab of Diamond Riverside. We took a park that was very tiny, very underutilized, and today made it a destination for people and the citizens to come to. And in about two weeks, the playground will not be a pond anymore, as we will fix that drainage in two weeks. The installation of Cascade Falls Bridge went in about a month ago, which brought to the other side of Cascade, that we can utilize over there. There is a bear cage. They used to mine slate over there in the quarry, as well as much different views of the Cascade Falls. As this year progresses, we're going to put picnic tables and benches over there, to really make that park a more inviting place for people to come and enjoy. We have a phenomenal theater program during the summertime. In the last two years, we've offered a winter musical. And this year was Elf the Musical Junior. And over a two-night run, we had over 600 people come and watch that show. We did it over at the Bitterford Middle School Auditorium, that seats about 900, and the first night, we thought we were going to turn people away. So this program has completely taken off, and we continue to enjoy what they have been able to do. We see almost over 600 participants in our summer program. And when you take that into consideration, if you put 200 kids in each class, from kindergarten to eighth grade, there's 600 kids, we see a third of the students that attend Saco School System in our summer camp programs, which is a huge endeavor on its own. 2024 budget, I put this in because I wanted to talk about the increases more than anything else. The base pay is the biggest one that's going up, and it's going up about $92,000. But really, out of that $92,000, about $70,000, or 8.9%, is because of the minimum wage increase that the state pushed upon us at $1.05. The basic needs of what I classify that I can actually maneuver around is only going up roughly about $20,000. Our revenue, every year, we try to offset it, so our revenue this year, we're increasing it by about $104,000. The only program we're increasing the fees on is the summer camp program, and we're increasing it $50 for the nine-week program. So if you do the 40 hours divided by nine weeks divided by five days, it increases about 22 cents a day. And with that said, we increased it because of the dollar increase, as well as the increases that we're going to endure when we go into, take our field trips, and go in the admission costs and so forth. We don't have a kind of buy-as-you-want type of thing. If you participate in the program, you come and go to the field trips that we offer as part of the program. So really, the increase to taxpayers is roughly about $20,000 for this department for fiscal year 2024. Some of our 2024 projects and goals, we expect this year and kind of moving forward, some of this is going to take place in the near future. The playground renovation that you guys all budgeted for at Pepo Park will be installed on the week of April 17. The young school playground will have a drainage system put under it to make that playground a much more usable, friendly playground, which again will also be April 17. With the help of Saco Main Street and their donation for the block in the park that they've done for many years, we will be installing a gazebo at the Saco Dog Park for visual. It's the same style gazebo that is over at Memorial Playground right now. It's a 12 by 12, and it will be on a concrete pad. We are finalizing and working with the Saco River Corridor to get the permission, the permit, to install our stairs at Sandy Bottom. For people who don't know where that is, that is off of Ferry Road on the right-hand side, down on the sand dunes over there, where most people go fishing. And what we're doing is we're trying to control the erosion, but also increase the accessibility. It won't be handicap accessible. We'll increase the accessibility for people that can get down there during incline weather and so forth. Unfortunately, two weeks ago, I stood in front of you guys and talked about 12 School Street. And what we're continuing to do is, again, as we talked about that day, is develop a team program from the grassroots. 104 will be the room that we will start the program out of, which is roughly about an 800 or 900 square foot space. And we're excited, and we think that what we're about to do will at least get the program off the ground. And then from there, we will figure out what's the next steps, but we will get that program moving forward. And every year, I challenge my staff to expand our programs, and what can we do better in the city to enhance not just youth programs, but adult programs and senior programs. And those are the things that we will continue to work on every day. We usually don't put this in, but we wanted to put it in, because really, at the end of the day, Saco Parks and Recreation meets the needs of all citizens of this wonderful town, where we have families who depend on us to not only be there during the after-the-bell program, but also the summer camp program, to feed their kids, to watch over their kids. And most of these kids are with us, at least during the summertime, for eight, nine hours, 10 hours a day. They get two free meals when they come with us during those programs, just like they do at the school, where it's really an extension of the school during the summer months, and we're excited about it. And with our senior programs, you know, again, we're an active senior group. With the yoga, and the chair yoga, and the programs that we offer there allows the seniors to continue to stay strong in their homes and be active in the community. And like many of the departments before me, you know, I will sit here, and I will talk highly about the staff that I have for Saco Parks and Recreation Department. We are small, but we are mighty, with about 14 staff members, who maintain almost 200 acres of land, and who sees roughly thousands of kids and adults every day that walk through these doors. They are the ones that make the Saco Parks and Recreation the best department. And my goal is always to be the number-one department in the city, and I can't thank them enough. And with that, I conclude my budget presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Sommer? See no questions? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That brings up, we'll hear from Codes and Code Enforcement Officer Toomey.
My name is David Toomey. I'm Director of Code Enforcement. This year, we did a total of 1,696 permits. 505 of those were building permits. I remember the days when we were thinking, if we ever hit 500, we're having a great year. Since COVID, we haven't gone below 500. It's high, and it's staying high. It's very consistent. It's not jumping up, it's not jumping down. Also, in the last year, we did 204 inspections. That's gone up slightly. We brought in $70 million, which is higher than last year, which was around 43, due to rising costs of construction, and an uptick, and commercial construction has upticked. So we're seeing more of that coming down the pike. COVID, we didn't have very many complaints. They keep going up. We responded to 215 complaints in the last year. We reviewed 467 plans. Every permit basically has a plan we have to review, so we're busy looking at plans also. And we do all this with five and a half people. Five full-time, one half-time. Our achievements for 2023, we maintained a level of service while construction activity remained very high. We also filled a code opposition that was vacant for three months. We slowed down a little bit, but now that we have someone on board for the last three months, we're getting back to where we were before. I apologize to some people for not getting back to them as soon as I did, because we're so far behind, but they thanked me for at least getting back to them, which other towns may not be doing. So we did issue a record number of permits, and I don't see that slowing down. For this calendar year, I looked, we're ahead of last year for the first three months, so it's not dropping off, even though the interest rates are going up. And we continued to meet the expanded demands of all constructions. We basically do every inspection out there. We don't let them call them in. So we're meeting the demand, even with a short staff and a small staff. Our project's goals is to continue the expanded interdepartmental communications. We work with all other departments during our daily jobs. It's a team, the whole city is a team. We don't work independent. We want to try to be more efficient, and basically, with the iWorks program, we're finding more and more ways that we can use it, and we're expanding how we use it all the time. So hopefully, that will make us even more efficient. We want to move forward to the next level online permit application, which I just got ahead of myself. Basically, someday, we may even get to where we'll pay for permits online. We're getting there, but not quite yet. We want to get rid of paper permits, have everything applied for online. That should happen in the next year, so that's where we're hoping to go. We basically, on our other slides, which in the past, we had apartment inspections. We do not have the staff to do that. When it first started, it was a half-time position. It moved to a full-time only because we went through three part-time people. It's hard to keep someone part-time. So we're going to do some research to find out we can justify a full-time position doing other stuff, even if it's other departments. So it's not just us, but we can't take those back on staff, because we don't have the staff to do it, unless it slows way down, which I don't see happening. So we have to check to see what we can do on that. And we decided we might, would like to create a registry of all vacant and abandoned properties. We seem to have more of those and have issues with them, so we want to have them in a place we can find them an easy access place. So that's what our goals are. And that's about it for my presentation. Short, sweet. It's overdoing.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Hatch.
I thank you, Mayor Doyle. And thank you, Dave, for not coming forth with an add to staff, but they are another department that I worry about, with the potential for, I mean, you've acknowledged that construction hasn't slowed down. It's only one way to go if we're going to continue to pursue growth in the community. So I appreciate your reserve, but I want you to know that I'm concerned about being able to keep up with everything. At some point in time, we're going to hit a breaking point. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Code Enforcement Officer Toomey, I'm just looking at the, on page 73 of the budget, and I'm just kind of looking at, obviously, you touched upon it in your presentation, the goal of total permits issued was 1,696, I think you said. And in the book, it says 1,696 as well. And then it breaks those down. So of the 1,696 total permits, we're not just new buildings that were built, correct?
No, that's why the 505 was on the slide.
It's a culmination of many.
Electrical permits, plumbing permits, certificate of occupancy, yes.
Thank you very much. With that, that completes the 2024 fiscal year budget presentations for this evening. And that brings us on to item 11 of the agenda, the administrative updates. City Administrator Kane-Rath.
All right. Thank you. A couple of very brief updates. So just over the next two weeks, for a preview, next week, we'll be having budget presentations from HR Communications, IT Finance, the Fire Department Administration, and Planning. Then we'll be back on April 24 with presentations from Saco Main Street, Dire Library, BSO B Transit, Age-Friendly Saco, the Public Works Department, as well as assessing. Quickly, I'd like to, this was mentioned in Howard's presentation, but welcome Josh Lavoy, who recently began as an operator with WRRD. So welcome to Josh. We wish him much success here with the city of Saco, and are excited to have him join our team. Thank you to those who attended my open office hour session last week. Our next scheduled date will be April 25, 3:30 to 5:00, here on the second floor of City Hall. And lastly, just another plug for some open positions we have for the city. As Ryan mentioned, we do have lifeguards that are needed, grounds worker in Parks and Rec also, crossing guard in police, patrol officer in the police department, emergency communications specialist in the police department, as well as mechanic over Public Works. So anyone who you may know, spread the word. We're always looking for good people, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Kane-Rath? No questions? Thank you very much. That moves us on to item 12 of the agenda, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? See no council discussion and comment. Brings us to item 13, executive session. Is there a motion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, C, Real Estate.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman and Counselor Johnston. With that, any discussion on entering executive session? Roll call to enter executive session. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 to enter executive session. Before that, we will take a five-minute recess, a five-minute recess, so let's try to be in Brian's office for executive session at 7:55. 7:55. for executive session at 7:55. 7:55.
Greetings and welcome back from executive session. I entertain a motion to exit executive session.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion on exiting executive session? Roll call to exit, Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero at eight twenty four. That is, brings us to item fourteen, a report from executive session. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the quote order to authorize real estate transactions to provide for school construction site in the form presented to the council at this meeting.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call vote, Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.[1637.40][1637.40](APPLAUSE) Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adjourn at eight twenty six P M. Have a great evening everyone.